Some of our students here at Centerville High School. It's our National Merit and Committed Scholars Students. And so tonight, we're going to get a chance to recognize, we're going to call all fifteen names. So we did send an invitation out, we had a really good response of about twelve students who are going to be here. They might be stuck in traffic, but we're going to start right at the beginning. We're going to recognize all the students, so students, if you will. If you just kind of walk over here to my right and kind of line up on this wall. We will call you by name. You'll come up to the podium, Dr. Rohr will have a certificate for you. Mr. Durnball is going to do the introduction. Then we're going to have you stand right up here on this side of the wall here. So we can get a photo once everyone has gets their name called. So we'll get started in just a few minutes.
All right, call it over, the Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, October twenty seventh. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Durnball.
Here.
Dr. Graff.
Megan Sparks.
Yeah.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Looking for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Durnball.
Yes.
Dr. Graff. Megan Sparks.
Yeah.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes, next is.
This is Jack Durnball, and I'm the Eastern Principal here at Centerville High School. I'm standing in for Mr. Carroll, who unfortunately couldn't be with us this evening. I would like to thank the Board and Mr. Wesny for inviting us to be here to recognize this year's National Merit Scholars. The PSAT serves as the initial screening for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Last year, over thirteen million juniors from twenty-one thousand high schools across the United States took the PSAT, hoping to qualify for this prestigious recognition. Only fifty thousand students qualified for the program. And approximately seven thousand one hundred and forty students will receive scholarships for their undergraduate studies. We are here tonight to recognize and honor fifteen of our very best seniors for being selected as National Merit Commended Scholars and National Merit Semifinalists. We will start with the National Merit Commended Scholars. Sean Chaudry. Tatsuya Keneko. Daniel Uck. Dune Ranapinda. Rabika Rabi. Rohan Reddy Ranamahala. Tenisha Sawa. Oswat Sibikumar. Lucy Trout. And Alexander Wong. And now for our National Merit Semifinalists. Avery Coughlin. Siddharth Kurub. Sinarah Said. Arjun Bura. And Brandon Yu. The five semifinalist seniors will have the opportunity to continue in the competition to earn a National Merit Scholarship later this spring. We're celebrating with our students and their families at our National Merit Recognition Ceremony this past October the ninth. As part of that ceremony, we had them introduce their family and share something special that they feel positively influenced them at Centerville High School. It was an absolute delight to hear each of our scholars thank their families, their counselors, and mention teachers and programs at Centerville High School that have been part of that very successful journey. The future is most definitely bright for these students, and we wish them all the best in their future. Congratulations, scholars, and thank you to the Board of Education and Mr. Wesny for inviting us this evening. Parents, if you'd like, you can come forward and take a picture. We'll take a few minutes so you can take a picture.
Next is public participation. We don't have anyone signed up for the evening, so we will move on to the Board and the Secretary of Research. First, let the slide report, Dr. Graff.
Good evening. I didn't have very long reports last couple of months, so forgive me because this month is a little different. The General Assembly has been back in session in October and quite busy with the past couple of weeks. Today, I'm going to highlight some of the legislation that seems to be moving forward. The topics that have taken up the most time in the legislature legislature since they returned from break have been congressional redistricting and property tax reform. Regarding property tax legislation, today we did have our OSBA Legislative Liaison Meeting. And so we focused a lot on the four bills that have passed out of the House and are currently being considered by the Senate and seem likely to move forward. The General Assembly will break again, likely the week before Thanksgiving, and they will be out until the first of the year. So the thought is that these will probably go through before that break, meaning they're going to move fairly quickly. In prior reports, I mentioned that the governor's Property Tax Work Group met through August and September. They released their opinions and recommendations on September thirtieth. And so then the General Assembly kind of took some of those recommendations under consideration as they moved forward with their bills. It included recommendations that involved some of what the governor had vetoed from the budget bill and some new ideas. It included topics like school district consolidation, capping tax increase, capping tax growth and increases. So here are the couple of bills that are important to know. House Bill one eighty-six passed out of the House just last week. The vote was actually seventy-two to twenty-three. I apologize for my typo. It will cap tax growth to the inflation limit for districts who are on the twenty mil floor. And it will also give a retroactive tax credit, tax twenty twenty-three, I believe. This was going to leave a number of districts with a significant funding loss. We are not on the twenty mil floor, but about a third of the districts in Ohio are. So last week, prior to the passage, it was amended to allocate four hundred and sixty-five million dollars. It's coming from the state fund that was set aside for the sales tax holiday in August. So that was not used as much as the legislature thought it would be, so there was money left there. So they're going to take money from that fund to make these districts whole. With payouts being in August of twenty twenty-six and then August of twenty twenty-seven. The caveat to that would be the August of twenty twenty-seven payout would be in the next budget cycle. So the next General Assembly would have to agree and allocate those funds again in the next budget for that to actually be paid out. So there are mixed thoughts on whether or not that would actually happen. But overall, this appropriation that was added into this bill outside of the budget cycle is unusual. And so one of the comments in the meeting that I thought was interesting was that it really was a win for advocates for public education to get any money allocated in that direction at all. So maybe that's something good. House Bill three thirty-five also passed out of the House, a very similar vote that is written correctly. This will potentially affect us because it will cap tax growth of all inside millage to that same inflationary indicator as House Bill one eighty-six. It would start in tax year twenty twenty-six, and that would affect not just schools, but all the other entities that receive inside millage. So then two other bills that have gone out of the House and have had their first hearing in the Senate. Last week, they were heard in the Senate Local Government Committee. House Bill one twenty-nine is going to be the one that includes all the additional levy types in the twenty mil floor calculation. So there is a substantial number of districts that then will be coming off of the twenty mil floor, which will affect their funding substantially. And then House Bill three oh nine, this goes back to one of the vetoes from the governor from the budget bill. This is the legislation that allows county budget commissions to reduce millage on certain voter-approved levies. If they, it's worded very vaguely, if they find it prudent to do so. There is apparently a caveat that was put in about if, so if after this, if this legislation goes through and is put into law and a district were to have a property tax levy approved after that, then the county budget commission cannot touch what's collected from that new levy for five years. But anything that has already been approved would be kind of fair game. And there's very little information as to how that would be determined. For our local districts who occupy more than one county, it's also not at all clear which county commission has what impact. And so there's a lot there. It is also important to point out that between these four bills, they've all been introduced and they're going through the legislature separately. So there's very little understood yet about how they will interact, depending on which ones pass and which ones don't, and what that modeling will look like for districts and communities with them kind of combined. So we're not quite sure what all that's going to look like yet. Outside of property tax legislation, there are a number of other bills that impact the education space and are moving through the General Assembly. House Bill fifty-seven was signed into law by the governor last week. It goes into effect on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-six, so ninety days after he signed it. This was initially introduced as a bipartisan bill to have schools who elect to keep an overdose reversal drug. So naloxone or Narcan being kind of the most common of those for emergencies. It requires that they have to adopt and implement a policy on how they're going to keep that supply, maintain it, training, reporting, those kind of things. It also permits those districts to accept monetary donations that are directed to purchase those overdose reversal drugs and then puts in place reporting policies for that money. It also has a section that requires the superintendent to report the use of an overdose reversal drug. So to the district governing body, the school board, and to the parent of the student affected as soon as it is practicable to do so. And then there's annual reporting to do for that as well. They did amend this bill right as it was kind of going through to also adjust the release time for religious instruction guidelines again. So essentially what they did was allow districts the option to increase the maximum amount of time that students can be released for religious instruction beyond the two periods or credits if you're in high school per week that was put in the budget bill. The minimum remains the one period per week per the law. I guess there were districts who had students that were leaving for class twice a week, but then they also had a provision that they were going to attend a service or something, mass or service. And so they needed some of that flexibility, so that was added on to this bill as well. Senate Bill one fifty-six was initially heard in the Senate Education Committee, passed out of the Senate last week with a twenty-four to nine vote and will go to the House. This legislation requires school districts to provide what's called success sequence education in at least one class that's required for high school graduation. According to the bill, success sequence means a three-pronged framework for youth and young adults based on research from diverse institutions that individuals who complete at least a high school education, obtain full-time work, and marry before having children are overwhelmingly less likely to live in poverty in adulthood. And so they will have model curriculum available and reporting and auditing rules also included in this legislation, and it's moving over to the House. Additional bills that are making movements probably will not go further until the first of the year. Senate Education Committee held a fourth hearing on Senate Bill one forty-four. This is going to revert teacher grade band licensing back to the form it was with the prior General Assembly. So those grade bands will be pre-K to five, four to eight, and seven to twelve. But there's also a provision in this bill that says that the district has the, permits the district to employ a teacher, a certified licensed teacher who's been teaching for at least one year. They are then permitted to practice outside of the designated band, to teach outside of the designated band. So it does give some flexibility there. And then Senate Bill nineteen is moving forward from Senator Brenner. This is going to require mathematics improvement and monitoring plans, very similarly to the reading plans that they put in place a while back. So that's not a big surprise. In the House Education Committee, House Bill three oh four had its third hearing. Last week, this is the bill that was kind of spurred on by our student groups to allow districts to permit club and individual athletics to qualify for the waiver for the physical education class requirement. Provided there's documentation and coaching, there's rules to go with this. The other part of the bill that hasn't really been discussed a whole lot is that it would require students K through eighth grade to have at least two thirty-minute recess periods, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, unless those students have a physical education class that day. Just the comments that have been voiced have been, where would we put those thirty minutes in a day that's already stuffed full for academic requirements and where we're allowing other students to leave for other reasons? So it's not clear. The folks at OSBA feel like that will probably come out of the bill if it does move forward, but we shall see. And then House Bill four fifteen also had its third hearing. This is called the Crown Act. It's been introduced in at least the previous two General Assemblies. And so the thought is that it probably will move forward this time. It's the Creating a Respectful and Open World for Natural Hair Act. So it basically prohibits a school district from discriminating against a person based on the natural texture or style of their hair. So that is, seems to be moving forward as well. Then the Education Committee had a second hearing on the Charlie Kirk American Heritage Act. This is, quote, "to permit teachers in public schools and state institutions of higher education to provide instruction on the influence of Christianity on history and culture." And when I first read that, I thought, okay. But if you go on to read the legislation, then it starts to say, it says, "The teaching of the historical positive impact of religion on American history is consistent with the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. An accurate and historical account of the influence of Christianity on the freedom and liberties ingrained in our culture is imperative to reducing ignorance of American history, hate, and violence within our society." And then it lists a number of specific occurrences or events that would be included in this kind of curriculum. So that, this second hearing was opponent testimony, and it's not clear yet if or when there will be a third hearing in the House. And then House Bill four eighty-five has a second hearing scheduled for tomorrow. This one is a little near and dear to my heart. It's called the Baby Olivia Act. It is stated that it will include human growth and development instruction in health education. It would require curriculum to be added to all health classes, grades three through twelve, audited by the Department of Education workforce for compliance annually. It is about fetal development, so it requires that the district includes at least a three-minute-long ultrasound video of fetal development of a list of prescribed organs. It also includes viewing what's called the Baby Olivia video, which is available online, created by a group called Live Action. And it is an animation of fetal development from the time of fertilization. So we shall see. I've actually reached out to the sponsor of this bill a couple of times because there are some scientific and factual inaccuracies in fetal development and neonatal care. So I've invited her to come and learn about some of the embryology and fetology. And I'm hoping that I will hear back. So I think there's certainly some room for education on that. And then the only other thing I will mention, because I know it kind of came around a little bit. You may have heard that Senator Brenner, the Chair of the Senate Education Committee, presented sponsor testimony last week to the Senate Finance Committee regarding his bill, Senate Bill ninety-three, which we had talked about kind of early in the year. This bill, he's designed to kind of completely alter Ohio's school funding process. So it caused kind of a stir when he presented it. The folks at OSBA were pretty quick to say that this is not a bill that will go anywhere outside of a budget cycle, but it's meant to kind of start the conversation and to kind of prep the discussions for early twenty twenty-seven when we start talking about the next budget. What he proposes in his bill is to essentially, at least at this point, eliminate a school district's ability to levy any sort of local funds through property tax or income tax. It also would require that school districts would no longer receive any inside millage from their community. Instead, the state would collect a twenty mil property tax and an increased sales tax and then determine a universal per pupil dollar amount that would accompany a student to either a public or chartered non-public school. His proposed amount was eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars per student at this time. It would eliminate the Ed Choice program because dollars would just follow the students. If we multiplied that by an estimate of eighty-two hundred students in Centerville, it would give us approximately ninety-four point five million dollars as a total budget, which is would be pretty devastating for our district and all the things that we offer our students. So it's not expected to go anywhere at the moment, but it is out there. So the other thing I will just mention is that the education omnibus bills are coming likely in early twenty twenty-six for discussion. The House has released theirs. It's called House Bill four fifty-five. It's over five hundred pages. There are some things that OSBA has advocated for that have made it into this version of the bill. So we just kind of very briefly touched on them. I'm hoping that at Capitol Conference we'll have more information about that bill. And perhaps by then the Senate will have released their omnibus bill as well. But I have not had a chance to dig into that a whole lot yet. Hopefully, some of the language changes will actually be very positive. So I anticipate that the next few weeks are going to be quite busy at the State House. By November's meeting, we should have a little bit of a recap, and then the General Assembly will be out in December, so you won't have to worry about me having much to say.
Well, I appreciate all that wonderful good news. Would that be tonight? Can do is urge everyone to contact their legislators, let them know the good things.
All right, on a more positive note, us student board reps, we have been pretty busy over the last month. The first thing I will talk to you guys about tonight is our Miami Valley Roundtable meeting. We are currently preparing a presentation to the Ohio School Board Association in conjunction with three other school districts, Northmont, Miamisburg, and West Carrollton. We are currently trying to represent the positive effects of having student board reps underneath the title of Miami Valley Student Board Reps Champion Change. This will be November seventeenth, and we will be going down to Columbus and presenting this to the Ohio School Board Association.
Hello, board members. Different note, at the last month's candy. Oh, I'm Titus Lee. I'm a second-year board rep. And at the last board meeting, we talked to you guys about some candy comments results we had from students, and a lot of students felt disconnected within the district. And to address that, we're excited to talk about our new student-led focus group. So to address that disconnect, we compiled leaders from across the high school in the district. So that's student council, various team captains, just, you know, overall well-rounded people within the community that we know we can rely on and depend on. And this was just to get more feedback and really create a hive mind. We had great discussion, really focusing on the community read and that Centerville Safe has started. And we have created a student group that we intend to bring to the larger conference on February twenty-first, so we can have some student advocacy on the issue of cellphone usage. And really just good to inform them about it so they can inform their peers and so it can create a little ripple effect. And we're excited that from that group, we are going to be putting a comment box. So very similar to the candy comments that we do. It'll be a box that we put in the front of Central that students who walk by can put their comments and grievances in just to streamline the process to make things a little bit quicker and more accessible. And I think Connor is going to talk about the candy comments.
So I'm Connor Douse. I'm going to do this month's candy and comments. So this month was a lot different. Last month, there was kind of some negative stuff, but I think this month, students seemed to have a more positive viewpoint, so that was good. The first question we asked was about the atmosphere at CHS. A lot of people said that more school spirit, color, festive things. I know like in East, they decorated for Halloween, so things like that could help. They also talked about social opportunities, whether it be clubs or groups at lunch, and some other suggestions, things like maybe healthier lunch options, a tightening of the dress code, that kind of thing to help make people feel more comfortable at school. And then one really thoughtful response I have was make school more meaningful. And I think a lot of times we can get lost in the academic side, and it's important to remember how it relates to school. So we're going to try and work on how to get people to connect school to the real world. Our second question was about clubs. This one was interesting. We just asked people to say what kind of clubs they want. We got a lot of answers. Cooking and baking club was a big one. Girls tackle football or just flag football was one that was asked for a lot. But I also had a lot of people say that they felt like there was too many clubs. They didn't know how to find information about clubs. So we're going to try and create a concise list or find a concise list that we can share with students to give them information about the clubs that they already have. And then our final question was about us, the student board reps, and what they would like to see us doing. So this one was also interesting. We got a lot of people who said they don't essentially really know who we are. And so we're going to try and start a social media and in-person campaign to try and get people to know our faces and see what we're doing. And that's a big part of this is like getting people to participate in what we're doing. And then people who did know who we were, they wanted us to focus on the atmosphere. We're just kind of going back to question one, and then also just making sure that everyone's included. So finding ways to include people from all walks of life and all, you know, different grades and abilities. But our main goal this month is really to, you know, keep working on. Our main goal this month is really to, you know, keep working on the focus group and just try and work on some of these problems, which I've and Good things that I've just addressed. So yeah. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Mahir. This is my second year as a board rep. And today I'll be talking about the Montgomery County Education Service Center. I recently attended a conference that they had. They have four conferences in a year along with a field trip. So essentially, this first meeting was an introductory meeting and essentially what The Montgomery County Education Service Center does is aims to provide students a voice in The county and statewide issues and legislation as well. So what we talked about was a lot of future readiness. We were also reminded of the importance of youth science, how much it can contribute. But also that also relates to the Business Advisory Council, which works in tandem with The County Education Service Center and works to provide schools with a connection to the workforce. Which brings me to my next point about the rating system and how the workforce system has been added. So recently, the Ohio Department of Education changed its name and added Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. And another thing that they've added to the system Is the future readiness index, which has a ton of factors, including SAT scores, ACT scores, AP scores That Mr. Trilla has gone in far more detail than I have in. But essentially, we learn more about these factors and how helpful they are. But as to what I can speak onto personally is that I've seen Our school, well, first of all, our school is a five-star school, which is like incredible. But we're also raising our standards and striving to become, again, that five-star school and that future readiness index. Me as a senior personally, I've seen Me given the the seal, the Future readiness seal, I think it's called, or the graduation seal. I think it's called a workforce or graduation seal. I can't remember which one. But this year, we've seen the seal and we've seen the ability to be able to demonstrate our readiness for the workforce and Thank you.
And we're really, oh, my name's Samantha, but we're really excited to go up and present at OSBA and we hope to report back with positive things.
Thank you.
I'm afraid my report is super short. Sorry, everyone. So I went to the OSBA Southwest Fall Conference. We met the new CEO of OSBA. There was a short legislative reports and then there was awards. I was able to receive the awards for Centerville for the Purple Star Schools, which were PVS, PVN, Klein, Driscoll, John Hole, Stingley, Weller, Magzik, Tower Heights, Watts, and CHS. And that's the end of my report. Sorry.
Good evening. Due to the board's meeting schedule in September, we weren't able to talk about the report card Because it was released the day of our only meeting. And so we'd like to give an update to the community about our report card this year.
And so just a reminder, the the information that we're going over and Many other aspects of the state report card are publicly available on the state website. You can just You know, Google search Ohio State Report Cards. It'll take you to a landing page. You can look up Centerville. You can look up a number of different schools. But one of the things that we wanted to point out to start off is that the state report card is based on six criteria that the state determines. They're not weighted all the same. The two components that are weighted more heavily are the achievement component and the progress component. And then there are four other components that we're going to talk about. Might have some of the board reps come up here and and school us too. I don't know, but it was a great Preview for what we're talking about tonight.
And so hopefully you already know this information, but we have once again earned the five-star rating, which from the state says that we significantly exceed the state's standards. And so we feel very fortunate to work in a community where we have community support, parent support, student support, and our teachers are putting in lots of effort to make this happen. And so we also feel like this is the culmination or work that has been the fruits of our labor from the work we've done with the strategic plan. And so we're about four years into our strategic plan. And so the focuses that we have there are things that are helping us as we look at the the layers of the report card.
And so we're excited to announce and just share again, and we've shared this a couple of times. But Centerville City Schools was one of forty-seven districts in the state of Ohio to earn a five-star rating overall. To put that in context, there are six hundred and seven districts in the state of Ohio. This puts us squarely in the top Eight percent, seven point seven percent of five-star or of schools in the state of Ohio. That's an important note, too. It is not easy to do. And again, as Ms. Colby mentioned, You know, we we're very intentional with our work and we have leadership and guidance that are that are that is driving that work. Last year at this time, there were sixty-eight schools. So that was a significant drop in the number of five-star schools from Last report card to this. So we're proud of the work that we're doing and we think that The intentional and directed work that we do on a daily basis in our buildings, in our classrooms are Bring up this type of result.
And so what we're going to do really quickly is walk through the six areas and and talk through How we performed on each of those and what they mean and how they're calculated.
So the first Component is achievement. Achievement actually comes up in quite a few of the other Components as well, but this is based on last spring's Ohio State Tests. There are tests that students take In grades three through twelve. And this is an attempt to just capture student performance on those state tests. You do get that where it used to be more binary, either students passed or didn't pass. Achievement attempts to capture also how well students did. So now As as in addition to the new report card, they look at the categories in which students scored and there's some Bonus points, if you want to think of it that way, for students who who perform it at the higher ratings. And You can see that we had quite a few students in those higher categories.
The next one is progress. And again, taking those same Ohio State Tests, but this time looking at students' performance from one year to the next. They use a formula that calculates whether kids have grown a year's worth. And so They use the test that they've taken to extrapolate how they should score on the test they take the following year. And so As you can see from all the blues and greens, we have lots of students that are exceeding that year's worth of growth. Of course, in all of these measures, there's plenty of room for growth for for improvement. And so that's what we also dig into from these measures as well. But again, we earned a five-star in that progress, which is really awesome to have kids growing that year's worth and more.
And a bit of a compliment to to that, the last, the progress component is gap closing. Gap closing is really looking at the different state-defined subgroups that Scotty I pay very close attention to. This is looking at whether or not students are making achievement in each of those subgroups. How well are we serving all of our different populations of students? We included this graphic because we think this is pretty telling. You'll see the yellow dot on the graphic that is the state's Goal for us in achievement in each of those subgroups in English and math Achievement. You can see we met or exceeded in every one of those categories. And this is a, this is a great, you know, it's kind of a picture tells a thousand or says a thousand words like this is a great Depiction of the work that's happening in our classrooms. I'm up again. Graduation, I don't want to overcomplicate this. Pretty simply, it's the number of students that we get to Graduation meet their graduation requirements. There are a couple asterisks here. One, and this will come up later. Are this is reflects the class, the four-year cohort reflects the class of twenty-four. So it goes back Kind of two years, if you want to think of it that way. And so That's just important to note. What is also important to note is any student And we do have a number of students who have significant special needs Who decline their diploma. So they may have met and did often meet their high school graduation requirements. But to continue with their program where we do You know, life skill building and and work-based learning opportunities through the age of twenty-two. They have to decline their diploma to be eligible for those programs. Those students actually are not counted in the numerator, even though they made graduation requirements when they when they declined that. So those are things that we look at when we're trying to understand how we did. I think the one last thing that I would say about graduation, Which we did earn a five-star rating and this is a very, this is a number we should be proud of. But our school possibilities typically accounts for around five percent of our graduates. So they do amazing work there with students who are at risk. And we always want to call that out in this metric also. But very, very good numbers that we are proud of.
The next layer is early literacy. There are actually three components to this Overall rating and one of those is the improving K-three literacy. We actually weren't rated on this because Last year's entering kindergarten, more than ninety percent of the students were on track based on that that beginning of the year diagnostic measure. But we did have the other two components. This is one of our highest rated areas in comparison to the rest of the districts in Ohio. And so Lots of great work happening in that early literacy realm, K-three in our district.
And as was mentioned before, this year, the college career workforce military readiness component of the report card. This is the first year that schools have been rated on this component. This year, we met the standards for the state of Ohio. This component really looks at your graduating class. And again, this is similar to graduation. It goes back two years. And it looks at the number of students in the graduating cohort Who met one of many categories. You can see there's there's a number there, but Things like, did they earn a remediation free score on their ACT? Did they earn A twelve-point industry credential? Did they earn a three or higher on three AP tests? You can see there's a whole list of criteria that students Can meet the college career workforce and military readiness component. We are still doing some work to look at this. What I did want to share here In gold are the percentages of our graduating class that met the different criteria In the black or gray bars, those are the averages from our similar districts in the state of Ohio. Similar districts are defined by the state of Ohio. So you can see in many cases, we're exceeding or Performing very similar to our similar districts. We're working on this and looking at programming, looking at opportunities for schools. I will say, I was hopeful that Dr. Graff, I know she had a lot there, but would mention too that this is under some scrutiny. They're they're looking at this To maybe look at reevaluating how they're calculating This part of the of the report card. But when you look at our similar districts, we are very competitive in that comparison group.
And so that is just a very quick walkthrough of the six areas of the report card. We can answer any questions that that you might have as you dig into the data. There you can download, anyone can download most of the data that backs up all of this information from that state site. And again, we are very proud of the fact that we've met or exceeded that state standard in all of these areas.
And we we said it earlier, but it We can't express the amount of appreciation we have for the board, our community, our students, we have, we have our teachers, our administrators. This doesn't happen by chance. This is everybody pulling in the same direction. And, you know, we're always, we always appreciate when we're recognized for that. And on some level, it doesn't surprise us because we know the work that everybody puts in every day.
And this is the last time we're going to be talking about this because we're more than a quarter into working on next year's, right? And so we just wanted to share that update with the community.
Thank you. Congratulations. I mean, we're all of us. It's been a great, great achievement. Everyone in this just should be very proud.
Can I just enter? I just based on your point in this House Bill four fifty-five, the omnibus bill, it does sound like OSBA has gotten in language for both Adding this special needs students who have met the graduation criteria, getting them added to the the numerator, even if they choose to continue their services and looking at that Final criteria and how it's put together. So hopefully that as that gets flushed out, those will both Be adjusted with that legislation.
And the other point to talk about is those students that leave the school district early.
Good evening. I am filling in tonight for Becky Ferby, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight. So If you flashback to last year, the rules changed for special education. We have always had special education policies and procedures, but beginning for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, It is now required that our board, each district's Board of Education adopts special education policies and procedures. Last year, we actually ended up doing it twice because they released them. We adopted them. Then they amended them, made some changes in April and we re-adopted For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Now you will have a resolution tonight, later on, to adopt Our special education policies and procedures for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We have, there are no changes in those policies and procedures for this school year. But again, this is something we will be going over every year at about this time. We'll be asking the board to adopt these policies and procedures. Any questions tonight? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. As a member of the EPC, We get to take advantage of them negotiating energy prices for us. You know, for the over three hundred members that are part of that. And so EPC has negotiated an extension to our electric energy prices As well as locking in a rate. That rate is point zero five nine nine five For twenty twenty-five and they've extended that for three years up until twenty twenty-eight. And so they've looked at projections of energy prices. They've looked at locking in rates for 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 anywhere from two years to five years And found that this three-year extension gets us the best possible price. And so tonight, there's a resolution. Just go ahead and allowing us to be part of the EPC And going ahead and extending our price that we have locked in until December of twenty twenty-eight. So we we continue to try to make upgrades and automation to our lights, changing those over to LEDs. Making our building automation with our HVAC system. Looking at LED lights and like our parking lot here at the high school. We just completed that at Transportation Center, looking at our gyms and our parking lots and our stadium lights To to cut down on those energy costs whenever possible. So this just locks in that rate for the next three years. Thank you.
So good evening. Tonight, we've heard a little bit about property tax reform, you know, some messages that Dr. Graff has presented. So A lot of conversations across the state regarding property taxes. And we want to just take some time To share some facts with the community and with all of you on how eliminating property tax will have a huge impact on our school district and how that Will take place if if property taxes are eliminated. But we're not here just to kind of share information. We're also trying to to share data and facts to come up with solutions that helps everybody With the property tax reform. So we've heard it tonight a little bit. We also heard a little bit about consolidation of districts. And so part of our presentation tonight will be a part of that. We often start our presentations and talking about our mission and what we try to do. And I appreciate the curriculum. If you're really paying attention to their slides, they went back to our mission statement To empower, challenge, and support every learner to grow every day. Today, we're really going to focus on one of Today, we're really going to focus and one of our focus areas, and that is resourcing and supporting. So I think it's always important to kind of keep that in the forefront as we move forward. And tonight, our goal is to talk about a balanced property tax reform. We know property taxes can be overwhelming. We heard that a lot when we went back through the operating campaign last school year and the previous failed campaigns in March and the previous year. We hear from some of our seniors about being able to stay in their homes. Families wonder how they can make ends meet. We realize it is an issue. It's, it's a big issue when it comes to property tax. So reform is needed and we're here tonight to talk a little bit about reform, but it shouldn't come at the cost of weakening our school system or the essential local services that we continuously have within our community. So the goal is tonight is balance and what is that, what does that balance look like as we move forward with property tax? Sometimes you'll hear that schools are to blame. You know, if you think about Centerville City Schools, we are the, one of the largest employers in several Washington township. We're a very large organization. So the facts show that schools have been consolidating and sharing services for decades. You know, there's a lot of conversations right now across the state for a consolidated county wide system, which all the school districts are going to 88 for all the eight counties in Ohio, plus the three big Cs is what's called Cleveland, Cincinnati and Columbus. So it'd be 91 total districts. But if you think about it over time, there's already been a lot of consolidation. There used to be over a thousand school districts in this state and is now down to about 609 districts. This shift hasn't started just overnight. This is something that's kind of been working itself over decades. The share of the paid taxes are coming now from our homeowners and from our farmers across the state. Meanwhile, the state's investment has not kept up with the pace of inflation. And so as you can see, and you'll see on this next slide, over the last 23 years, Ohio has fallen from 35th to 45th in the nation for funding public schools. Another fact, if you look at the surrounding states to Ohio, Michigan, Kentucky, Indiana, West Virginia, they pay more per pupil in their student funding than the state of Ohio. So there's a concern about the lack of state funding that we receive, the lack of state funding that is received for all public schools across the state of Ohio.
Good evening. So a lot of the stuff that we're talking about tonight, I feel like is kind of a repeat of what we talked about during the levy campaign, but it's all still relevant, every bit of it. And so Mr. Wesley just talked about how this, we've gone from 35th in the state to 45th over the last 23 years. The state's support has grown less than 1% per year that adjusted for inflation. We know what costs in our own homes are doing. We're all experiencing that. Schools are not exempt from it. We're experiencing the exact same thing. The unfunded and underfunded mandates and the rising costs of our goods and services have require additional funds. The only way to do that is to ask for a levy or to cut costs, which usually means cutting programs. So what are some of the things that, that we're doing more with less? We, Mr. Wesley talked about the consolidation of fewer districts today than what there were many decades ago. Shared services, we do that already with some of our staffing, some of the specialized services. Many, many districts do that with busing. They, they share with other school districts with busing. So where there are opportunities, we're doing that. We're, we're parts of organizations like the Educational Purchasing Council that Mr. Kogle talked about. We're constantly trying to find ways to consolidate and be, be partnered with other districts. But while doing all of that, we just heard from Mrs. Calippi and Mr. Turello about what great results we've gotten on our report cards. So we have been able to maintain those five stars, even though we're doing it more with less. So one of the things that's, that's changed, that shifted is that I think is really important because why are the homeowners paying more? There's two big reasons. The first one is the elimination of the business tangible personal property tax. This happened back in 2005 and for many years, the state reimbursed that money to districts, but that went away. So that was through budget cycle after budget cycle after budget cycle. That was continuously chipped away and that reimbursement went away. The same thing now is happening with the rollback and homestead rollback, basically. So the state used to cover 12 and a half percent of, of every levy. Well, now since 2013, 100% of that is being paid by the local taxpayers. We're not getting that reimbursement from the state from those levies. So for example, of the $11.2 million that we just passed per year, had that been prior to 2013 and we were getting that rollback, the community would be paying $9.8 million and the state would be paying $1.4 million. That's not happening. The community is paying that full amount. And again, the businesses are paying less. That means that the homeowners are paying more. So this, the, the, the pressure on the homeowners has been a long process to get to where we are today. I don't think any of it was through malice. I think that it was to try to attract business and it was for different reasons throughout the years that made sense to people at the time. But unfortunately, it's just put a lot of pressure on the, the homeowner.
So the shared, shared challenge, you know, this isn't easy, obviously for our taxpayers or for our schools. We're on the same side of this challenge. We have families and schools are both carrying on way too much. We heard a lot of that tonight with some of the changes with all the things that are taking place at the legislative level and the changes that'll impact our schools and our community. So this isn't just an issue for several state schools. This is a community wide issue. And again, that's our goal tonight is to share some of the facts and how we try to move forward. Property taxes don't just fund schools. They support a lot of the other services in our community that we rely on. If reform isn't done correctly, families will continue to pay more while schools and local services are forced to cut back. And we've seen some of those cutbacks from the district. We tried to pass levies in the past and made some reductions in the services that we've provided. So moving forward, we're not just trying to describe the problem. We want to be a part of the solution and schools are, are standing with families to call for a balanced reform. The responsibility should be shared. We've said that many times. Matter of fact, we've been asked publicly about what's the school district going to do to try to make reform better for our communities. And so again, the solution should protect the homeowners and the services that we keep our community strong. And that's really what we're striving to do is to make sure that we keep our community strong.
This should look familiar. So where does our revenue come from? Just, just as a reminder, 84% of our general fund revenue is, is being paid through property taxes. 77% by the local taxpayer and 7% is a reimbursement from the state. Those are from older levies. We are still getting that reimbursement from the state, also from homestead exemptions. They're, they're giving us that money as well. The state foundation formula only contributes 12% of our, of our operating revenue. We have been, and I've said this over and over, we have been and we can, will continue to be on a funding guarantee without major formula changes. This also should look pretty familiar to you that how much do we receive in state revenue per pupil? And I listed it as state revenue because this is both our foundation funding formula revenue and our reimbursements for, for rollback and homestead. We get about $3,000 per student. This was as of the, I believe, the 2024 district profile report. Similar districts to us, it should be the same similar districts that, that Sheree and Adam mentioned during the, the local report card section. They're getting $3,250. But as a state, that average is, is over $7,400 per pupil. So it just shows districts like us where that local capacity is calculated to be higher because we have high property values, we have high wealth factors. We're expected to fund more locally to, to fund our schools. And Mr. Wesley mentioned the local impact. Again, this is not just the school district that is impacted by property tax reform, or if there is an initiative to eliminate property taxes, which is, which is being discussed in the future. We receive 84% of our revenue. So does the park district. They also, 84% of theirs is coming from property taxes. Washington Township gets 73%. Police, fire, roads, 73% of their budget is from property taxes. The library at 58% in the city of Centerville, they're funded a little differently because they have the income tax. They receive 7% from, from property taxes.
So a little bit of a call to action tonight. We were going to provide some information. You've seen some of that information already about how to contact your legislator. We're also asking folks that are here and folks that watch this presentation to share this within their communities, within their social networks, their groups, just to help ensure reform is balanced. And so the last slide that I had tonight is just a quick fact sheet. A lot of the facts that are presented on this sheet are now presented on our website. It has a lot of good information that Lauren and I went through this evening. But more importantly, there's a call to action button at the very bottom right hand corner. If you go to our webpage, it's, it's on the front page of the district website. If you hit the call to action, it'll take you to a list of our state legislators, their contact information and a sample letter on the second page of that that talks about how to write a letter talking about a balanced tax reform and how, why that is needed for our school districts and for our communities. And that concludes our presentation unless there's anything else or any questions from the board.
We're about 1,600 or between 1,600 and $1,800 per pupil through the formula. That does include the transportation funding. So then the other 1,200 ish dollars would be reimbursements. No, this is revenue. We, we, correct. We report all of our expenditures and there is a reimbursement, that, that is the reimbursement from all of our expenditures. So that would be, yes, that would be a part of our expenditures.
Thank you.
Consider approving this September 25 financial statement, monthly general fund rolling report, monthly tax reconciliation, monthly financial report. Send and now purged toward approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, as reported by board resolution. Totally 73,000, $3.76.
Hold on. Check it.
Hold the role please.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rourke?
Yes. Consider approving a limited following board meeting. With 16 word session, attend to 15 regular meeting and at 20, it's 15:00.
So moved.
Second.
Hold the role please.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rourke?
Yes. Consider approving a non-percentage health insurance thing with the calendar year 2026.
Second.
You want to comment on that? Laura or?
I can. We are, we are self-funded for our insurance program and every year we have to set the, the increase rate for the following calendar year. We did talk about this extensively at the work session last, last week. But the two years prior, we've been at a 0% and a 2%, just with inflationary factors and with holding the line like we did the last couple of years. We're looking at a 9% recommendation this year.
Which is, which is still, it couldn't be lower than what most people are getting.
It is.
It's still better. And we say hundreds and odd millions of dollars doing self-funding over the years.
Over the years, yes.
Hold the role please.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Abstain.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rourke?
Yes. Next, superintendent's recommendations. Superintendent recommends accepting the resignation as listed on schedule A. Recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the distributed personnel listed on schedule B for the salary programs on the effective dates given. Superintendent recommends the employment of change of employment status for the sports staff personnel listed on schedule C for the salary programs on the effective dates given. Recommends the employment of personnel listed on schedule B and D1 for supplementing contracts or extra duty assignments. Superintendent recommends the employment of personnel listed on schedule D2.
This is separate D2.
Okay. All right. Superintendent recommends granting a lease of absence for the personnel, personnel listed on schedule E for the reasons on the dates given.
So moved.
So moved.
Hold the role please.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rourke?
Yes. Next, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on schedule D2 for supplementing contracts or extra duty assignment.
So moved.
Check it.
Hold the role please.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Abstain.
Dr. Rourke?
Yes. Consider approving the Centerville City Schools Special Education Policy and Procedures, following the Ohio Department of Education and Workforces Model Policies for the 25, 26 school year, as we had talked about earlier.
So moved.
Check it.
Hold the role please.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rourke?
Yes. Consider authorizing the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to execute the amendment to the Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, 2024 Master Services Agreement between the school district and the IGS Energy through calendar year 2028, which we can't really talk about tonight. So moved.
Second.
Hold the role please.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rourke?
Yes. Consider approving the board of education meetings for the 26th calendar year.
So moved.
Second.
Hold the role please.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rourke?
Abstain. Thank you. Final comments regarding pastoral business on the board of education?
Yeah, I have some, oh, do you have something, Mr. Doll?
Go ahead.
Um, I've been talking to Mr. Wesley today. As you guys may have seen, snap benefits are not going out in November. The furlough is still going on with the military. So we have families in our community that are in need of help. And so Mr. Wesley and I are hoping to organize a kind of a food drive that will stay in our district. We're going to reach out to the joint entities to see if they'd be willing to partner with us. So just want to help.
Again, there's still, still hope that that won't happen. And I think our president was even saying it won't happen. So we'll, we'll see on November 1st, but hopefully it does. But thank you.
Please wanted to get ahead of it.
Oh yeah, that's great.
The, you know, some of the legislatures actions have some potential positives. The legislature has continuously, in my opinion, not done good things for any of the school districts in Ohio, especially ours. And please get in touch with your legislators, do everything you can because it not only affects some of them, not only affects just school districts, it affects every public entity in Ohio. And we had a meeting with our joint entities that's going to affect some of them really worse, a lot worse than others. The city has an income tax, it's going to affect them very little, but the rest of them are going to lose, you know, like us, a lot of their funding. So please contact your legislators and try to get them to understand the damage those provisions could do to our community.
Anyone else? All right, pursuant to Ohio advice code, 12122G1, I hereby move that the board adjourns to objection special to consider employment for compensation of a public employee, employees of the school district. No other business will be conducted except to the cutting half of executive session through the court. The motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hold the role.
Mr. Doll?
Yes.
Mrs. Durnbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Graff?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rourke?
Yes. You're all for coming.